Ready?
Now ready.
You say, yeah, okay. Like to call the meeting of the mayor and borough council of South River, meeting number nine and five twenty-three to order. Statement and notice, please.
In compliance with chapter two thirty-one of public law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January sixth, twenty twenty-two. Posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Roll call, please.
Your council is not here this evening. Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman Gindi.
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Here.
Councilwoman Mira.
Here.
Councilman Olivera.
Here.
Council President Seula.
Here.
Please rise for the sleeping flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Care for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, there are no proclamations, awards, presentations, uh, nothing on the agenda session. There will be an executive session at the end of the meeting. At that time, we'll go to the session and then we'll come back for adjournment. Ordinances on second reading only. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifteen, ordinance authorizing various federal housing and community development grant improvements and equipment located in the borough of South River, County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the full reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hurry. Like to open this.
Please.
Pardon?
We'll get the motion, I'm sorry.
Uh, Jim and Donna.
Thank you.
Like to open it up to public hearing. Anyone here from the public would like to make any comments on this? On first call? Second call? Third call?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gindi, second by Mr. Kretchinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion. All good? Okay, we have a motion to adopt.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gindi, second by Councilwoman Ballas, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Here, yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes. Should have been approved, wait, okay. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixteen.
Ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Motion to waive before reading.
Motion to waive before reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman Kretchinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
This time like to open up to the public. Anyone here from the public like to make comment on first call? Second call? Third call?
Motion, close.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gindi, second by Councilman Kretchinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Council President Seula, if I may, um, the court administrator reached out to us today and indicated that, uh, she would request an amendment to, uh, the fines in subsection A, they're the current fines that are in your ordinance, not the additional fines, uh, two for one instead of ten dollars, twenty-one dollars, for two overtime parking from ten dollars to twenty-one dollars, and three for other violations from ten dollars to forty-nine dollars. And if this, uh, amendment is sufficient and you want to accept the amendment, we will just need a motion, uh, to accept the amendment, a roll call, and then this will convert this hearing to first reading, and it'll be placed on the agenda for second reading for next, um, next council meeting in June.
Okay, is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Olivera, second by Councilwoman Ballas to accept the amendments.
Can we do a roll call on that?
Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
This will be going back to first reading, is that what we're saying?
This will be converted to first reading, second reading will be next.
Okay, yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
Okay, now we will need a motion, um, to put it on for second reading.
Okay, I move that council pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixteen as revised on its first reading by title only and let the clerk be authorized to publish same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M. on our next meeting, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second up.
Second. Second by Mr. Gindi, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So this will be placed on, uh, their June thirteenth meeting for its second reading.
Councilman Seula, uh, Council President Seula, I apologize, if you could just do a roll call on that.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
Could we still have discussion on this since we would have today anyway?
If you would like to discuss it, you can, uh, we, we don't have to discuss it because it'll be on for second reading next, but if you have comments on it and you would like to discuss it and that's the will of council president, you can.
I'm just curious, like, how long has it been since we've changed these fees? Do we know? Is that the reason why they want to change it to like a hundred and ten percent more than what it was, like?
As far as I understand, we got the call today from the court, and they're recommending that we change it to the twenty-one, twenty-one, and forty-nine. It's been, I guess, ten dollars for the longest time, I don't know when this ordinance was originally written.
So I'm not sure, i- are, is your question about the amendment from today, or is your question about the amendment, the actual ordinance from, that was on first reading for last week?
Uh, no, the, the last one, I believe you guys told me what we were amending was the construction vehicles out on the roads. This one that's coming up, I'm just curious to know, when was the last time we changed it and?
I, I don't know, I can find that information out for you, and what I will also do is I'll, I'll talk to the court administrator and I will get more information for you and I'll, I'll contact you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Nope, okay. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventeen.
Ordinance amending and ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain borough officers and employees in the Borough of South River.
Motion to waive the full reading?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kretchinsky, second by Councilman Olivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opening up to the public. Anyone from the public on first call? Second call? Third call?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gindi, second by Councilwoman Ballas, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance? Oh, I'm sorry, council discussion? Any discussion?
Uh, I do have a quick question. I see why we're amending the sal- salary ordinance now that we have today's agenda, um. Are we allowed to speak regarding department salaries? Bringing that back to the attorney. Uh, because I know this ordinance is changing the amount of the salaries for certain departments.
E- yes, the salary ranges.
Can we discuss that?
You can discuss the salary ranges as presented, yes, you can discuss the ordinance as presented, as to the particular salaries, I would be careful. Um, uh, however, you do get some leeway because this is a salary ordinance, so.
Okay, I'm just curious as to, um, who brought, well, whose ordinance was this to begin with, so I can direct my question? Who brought up the ordinance for this to come before us? So the budget committee?
The rec stuff, I had asked to be changed, some of the rec items. That's all now, so anything, uh, aerobics went on, or was the record filed with?
For the new, for the new positions to have salaries? Okay, in other departments, I'm just curious as to why we raised certain ones and not every department, like, is there a specific within that range? So what was the increase in these ranges?
Well, it's anything director, it went from eighty to eighty-five, board administrator went from eighty to eighty-five. Building plumbing electrical fire inspector, was the range, it got thirty-five now it's twenty-five. Construction official, we dropped because it was a high range, so, got like twelve thousand. And then deputy construction official, we titled it, it's in there with the range.
Okay.
And then the bottom of the recreation, that's the one that you guys approved, come on.
Okay. So I understand that we had the money within the construction department for those positions. Um, did we budget this year for those increases, and I'm just curious to know why only those departments?
Where we have the range, where we set them. Every, the salary goes out of the range, we need to amend the price of salary orders.
And the?
Every, every time you hit, union contracts, there's three or four pages of salary ranges.
Mm-hmm.
They're all still within the range, these million titles that are out of the range right now.
And do we know the last time we changed these ranges?
Two thousand nineteen was a, a major one, and then two thousand twenty, twenty-one, the title was dead, and that was not here, we changed also.
Okay, so this. So this all depends on the contract, is that what I'm understanding? Okay. Okay, that was my only question, I knew that this was for second reading, and today, perceiving our agenda, we see where some of these, uh, positions or increases are at, so I was just curious to know why only certain ones got them and others didn't. Okay, you answered my question.
So the hourly rates that are minimum wage, is it possible to put minimum wage right that in since minimum wage?
Yeah, we talked about that, but since it said thirteen to, whatever they go off, it's still within that range, that's what we were talking about.
But would we have to change it when the minimum goes up to fourteen?
But it will still be.
It's within that range.
In the minimum.
Yeah.
Probably won't though, after all, union contracts are up this year, so next year you'll see a resolution with everybody in there again, because those ranges will be out, will probably change it to like minimum wage.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
That's all I had.
Okay, you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman Olivera. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes. And Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mira, um, it was adopted in nineteen eighty, and it was revised in two thousand.
Okay, the first one.
The parking fine, yeah. Okay, moving on, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen.
Ordinance to amend the Borough of South River, chapter one fifty-five point one nine point one, section twenty-two dash sixty-two, to add additional program and class fees.
You have a?
To waive before reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman Gindi, all in favor?
Aye.
This time we'd like to open up to the public, anyone here from the public would like to speak on this ordinance? On first call? Second call? Third call?
Motion close.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kretchinsky, second by Councilman Gindi, all in favor?
Aye.
A council discussion, anybody here like to comment? Hearing none, motion for adopt?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gindi, second by Councilman Kretchinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Council, um, and Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes. Motion has been approved, okay. Moving on to ordinances by first reading by title only, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash nineteen.
Bond ordinance providing for improvements to the borough's water treatment, storage, and distribution system, incorporating nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one hundred thousand dollars in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the Borough of South River in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
You have a motion?
Motion to waive full reading?
Nope, nope, just go to a.
Yeah, this is title only, yeah. Uh, I move that council pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash nineteen on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held at a meeting at seven P M. on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilman, Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter seventy-two entitled Public Safety Department of.
I move that the council pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty on its first reading by title only, and let the clerk be authorized to publish same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held at a meeting at seven P M. on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman Kretchinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
I actually have questions about this.
Good luck. Do we, uh?
Do you want to finish the last ordinance?
We'll bring it up on the council.
Finish the last one.
Yes, council comments. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
I move that the council pass ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish same as required by law, with the second reading and public hearing to be held at a meeting at seven P M. on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street in South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes. Moving on to reports, uh, Art?
First?
First.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing? Okay. Moving on, Joe?
I have some questions for Art there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll be able to ask.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, just have a couple of questions regarding the power outage, and I know this is going to be a topic for tonight, but in the mayor's communication, he mentioned that P S E N G. didn't notify the town about, uh, lowering the voltage. What systems or s- uh, system is in place, you know, are they not required to let us know?
No, I, I think the, the mayor, uh, misunderstood. P S E N G. notified the borough to put out a nixle asking people to conserve. P S E N G. didn't lower the voltage into the town. Voltage that they normally give us was supplied. The failure on our circuit was causing lower voltage.
Do we know what the cause of the tripping of the circuit, was it the battery storage facility?
It was a, no, it was a bad circuit that had to be replaced. Adriano could better offer, yeah, a report on that.
Yeah, because this is something that, you know, we're in May.
Yeah, no, this, well.
And if you guys recall the League of Municipalities, this was a hot topic because right now, the grid is o- super overwhelmed, and there's, I think at the league, they said, what, two cars per street is what the grid?
Yeah, no, it had nothing to do with the charging stations. I don't want to use the word, but I know better word, the youth, it was sort of a blessing that it happened in May and not in July or August. Uh, we, we have a very robust maintenance program that goes on twelve months a year, but things like this, it'll be working fine today and it decides to fail tomorrow. There's no way to really take the circuit equipment and say, it's fine. We, the company we use, all the time gives us, um, suggestions to upgrade, and I think we've never turned down a suggestion to upgrade, as far as I know. They're very good, but this is something that was unforeseen. And in his report, I'm sure it's going to say, what we did on Sunday to replace it, we won't have a problem again.
I have a question, Mr. Landenski. With the battery, uh, storage project there, has it gone live yet at all?
No, it hasn't. They're still commissioning, they had meetings with public service in the last week, very close to being completed, not turned over to the borough yet.
Okay, and then, like I've stated before, I'm still unclear on how that whole battery storage project is supposed to be working, because I was not, I guess, up here when it was approved or when they did their, um, report on it, I'm still waiting to see if we can at least get some type of update for our residents, just because I see that people think we got like an upgrade with that stor- battery storage project down there, and that people aren't aware of what it actually is.
I, I'll make a short presentation at the next council meeting to go over exactly how it works and what it does.
Okay. And do we have that estimate date that they plan to go live?
Yes, they're very close.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Suarez, why don't you, uh, you ran the subject already? You got the microphone there, so you can?
On, uh, Saturday afternoon, the borough experienced low voltage from P S E N G., and the demand, the demand on the circus was too high because of the high temperatures outside, which caused the system to trip. Some areas had to be shut down on Sunday to decrease the load, so the entire circuit wouldn't trip, and to, and so, and so the, uh, the repairs can be completed. The, uh, new feeder cable for the circuit was replaced on Sunday, so hopefully that'll be good, we'll be good to go on that, so that's the issue.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Suarez? Okay, moving along. Mr. Zanga?
All right, just a couple items, uh, the first reading of the water ordinance, that is the first trench of American Rescue Fund money that we received of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. You also have another resolution, uh, that, for the demand relief for nonprofits and the schools, that's what we spoke about last meeting. And one more resolution for the purchase of tas- tasers for the police department under state contract, uh, that was done through the bond ordinance that we approved a couple of months ago, that's it.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Zanga?
I have a question, but I'm not sure if it's for Mr. Zanga or Mr. Landenski, the appointment of the part-time administrative assistant, wh- where is that going to?
That's going to be a floater in the building, um, a couple days a week to code enforcement, uh, a couple days, a week, uh, one or two days, depending on the load to construction, um, help in my office, help in Joe's office.
Okay, so that'll be in three, we still don't have a full-time clerk, correct?
No.
Are we still looking to do that?
We are still advertising, uh, we reached out to the clerks association, and we got zero applications so far.
Okay.
We're very fortunate to have Ms. McDonald.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Koch?
Thank you. The twenty twenty roads are complete except for the striping and any punchless work. Twenty twenty-one roads, the, uh, puddle flushers are the item that's holding that up. They're supposedly shipping this week, uh, contractor, if, if the shipping goes as scheduled, the, the work will be done after the holiday, uh, then the remaining paving can be done. The twenty twenty-two, uh, road program, we're working on that, um, we're getting the sanitary sewer T V inspection, and once we get that all done, we'll submit it to the D O T. The twenty twenty-three D O T. applications are, are available. Um, I issued a letter to the borough with six roads listed on it, which was the, uh, outcome from Mr. Suarez and I riding around for a while, he had a list he had made up, and we kind of collectively picked what we thought was the worst of them. They are in no particular order, the application, as with last year, is limited to three roads. So I would ask whether it's tonight or, uh, by your next meeting, to tell me if it's three of these or three others and you have consensus on, we will do whatever you want. Um, also, the tra- I attached to it the full, to my memo when I issued, or my letter when I issued, I attached the full D O T. announcement, so you can see the transit village, bikeways, and safe streets to transit are available again this year. And, uh, on your, on your agenda is a resolution for us to prepare the application. Once we have the list of roads from you, we will do that. Uh, substation maintenance is on, ongoing, uh, once the, uh, contractor is done with their connection, I believe the remaining feeds will be taken care of, and that will be done. And well number two replacement is moving along, the construction is pretty much complete, the D E P. issued the water allocation permit, the operation permit is pending, and, uh, w- we're scheduling something with the D E P. for the testing, there was a glitch there, but they decided to allow to use the water sample results that were previously taken on the well during the early part of the project, so that should be moving along also. I think that is it.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Koch?
I do, Bruce, I'm not sure if it's for you or, you know, the the project that we've been submitted for now for improvements on the water treatment. Um, can we elaborate a little more on what happened for us to have to do such a large project?
Are you referring to the bond ordinance tonight?
Yes.
We put that in just because we are able to use the ARPA money for a series of things, water sewer, uh, water treatment plant, so it's an overall thing, it may not include anything for more for the water treatment plant, that'll also include the, um, give us the ability to do the, uh, lead pipes in the twenty-four houses. But it's an overall, it's, it's an overall bond ordinance to be able to use the ARPA funds that we have, it's not specific at this point.
Okay, so then I guess I was kind of referring to, um, what we got from Bruce on Friday regarding the what the D E P. was requiring us to do at the water treatment plant with?
Well, that, that, that letter was part of the original violation notices that they were requiring us to put in double check valves and an air gap system. We've been going back and forth, and they've been very cooperative, D E P., they've asked us for estimates on what the cost is, and there is the possibility that they may waive, um, one or both of those requirements, depending on the cost, because the plant originally built forty years ago was approved at that time, and that wasn't the requirement. And, uh, there's a question on if the cost is excessive, they have talked about possibly giving us some relief from that requirement, it wasn't the requirement at the time the plant was built, correct, Bruce?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Wyatt?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Chief? Uh, Chief? Okay, thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Are we able to ask questions on ordinance twenty-two? Two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two, if they're directed at the chief?
There's no reason why.
Yeah, should be off the right, okay.
Twenty-two dash twenty?
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
Twenty.
Chief, um, well, I'm. One question for you specifically. So I had the opportunity to review. The new ordinance, the old ordinance, and under the new ordinance for the deputy chief position. One of the things that is changed is that sergeants and lieutenants are now qualified for the deputy chief position. Whereas the old ordinance, in order for a sergeant to be qualified, there only two lieutenants were allowed, correct? Is this the norm in other municipalities?
Um, there are municipalities that I've looked at in the ordinances that actually do have that. It's not only from sergeant.
Chief, I have a question. How come this didn't go before, before the public safety committee? So all three members of the public safety committee knew that this was going to be for first reading today?
He did discuss it, yes.
Did discuss it, and uh, there were revisions and everything to, to the old ordinance. So that's why it's come back.
Okay. I- I'm just a little confused as to why we went through so many times in removing this ordinance to just bring it back again. I mean. I think a little lack of communication between committees, between council members, between the mayor, I don't know. How do we remove something, take four meetings to remove something, just to bring it back again? I'm just. Nobody's ever mentioned it, that they've had these com- you know, conversations in public safety. Uh, nothing gets on the agenda session in our uh. Meetings here, we just put things on for first reading. Few of you looked concerned that this got here on the agenda, but. The only people that put stuff on the agenda is the mayor and the council president.
That could be like.
Nobody else is concerned here?
Well, it could be like when the business administrator was removed a few years back. Part-timer joined in. And realizing that a part-timer couldn't fulfill the job, they went to a full-time position. Right now, we're fortunate enough to have someone that's doing it part-time that's doing extraordinary jobs, so.
We're talking about an ordinance right now.
I know.
An ordinance that was put on the agenda. There's no discussion, there's no, there's no pre-meeting anymore, there's no agenda meeting anymore, there's just a meeting. There's nothing put on the agenda session and then we just get handed out these ordinances. I don't know if you guys noticed. I've always seemed to ask who puts these ordinances on the agenda because. There's no discussion before we put it on the agenda. So, I appreciate the chief stating what he needed to say, but why wasn't this discussed? Last year when we took four meetings to remove it? Why didn't the public safety committee at that time put a hold on that ordinance? We're starting over again with the same ordinance, wasting tax dollars on rewriting something that was already there. That we said we didn't have money for. But now we have money for it? Was money put in the budget for this position this year? So we found money for this position? I don't know. I think a little lack of communication between. Public safety committee, budget committee. Anybody? Anybody else have concerns about this ordinance?
The, the chief looked, he wanted it revised. I'm waiting. He told us when he would.
Mr. Gindy, you wanted it removed because we didn't need it.
I'm actually waiting for you to be done so I could ask him my series of questions.
Okay, go right ahead.
Alright, now. Yes, thank you. Alright, I know I worked on this and getting rid of this, and I know how much the police department did not want me to get rid of this. But back in December, we finally had the vote and we got, we removed the deputy chief's position, although I know that you told me to keep it on. My problem with the position was that one, we had no money for it. And two, it was dormant since two thousand and nine. My first question is, why are we bringing the chief's position back? And we've, we've had this discussion and uh, you know, I, I've spoken with, with the members of the union and. You know, one of the issues, the big issues that we have here is, is morale in the police department. And that's one of the suggestions that they, they get brought to me was to, you know, bring back the deputy chief's position, which I am looking to bring back that. Alright, now I know that obviously we spoke about the budget, cuz one of my other issues was we had no money back then. Of course, Joe Zanga just explained it to me. But. The crazy question is, ever since December, what actually changed? With the position? I mean, I, I saw how the ordinance was written out. Uh, one of my concerns with the ordinance was how now you're allowing the sergeants to now also take the test. Who, well, first of all, how many sergeants actually? You know, capable of ta- or I should say, qualified to take this test?
Out of, out of our six sergeants, uh, four.
Has anybody showed interest in it?
I haven't spoken to anybody about it.
Okay. In the ordinance, I also noticed that there's an interviewing process. What does it consist of?
It consists of myself, the borough administrator, uh, and the public safety chair or his or her designate. Uh, doing an interview process with the officers uh, that are interested in applying for the position.
Alright, what are the requirements?
Requirements is that a sergeant has to be on a, has to be a sergeant for four years and the lieutenant has to be in that rank for two years.
Alright, well, here's the next question, which is an interesting question. If the position is low, is filled. Do we have a contract in line or do we have anything?
The only contract that we've ever had for a deputy chief was, was John Brutalat, so I don't. That's something that, that uh, the person that gets to that position would have to speak with the borough administrator.
Alright, well, here's another one. I know that you have the sergeants and the lieutenants taking this. I guess you could say, uh, test. How does this work now in the future? Let's just say you decide to put in a sergeant where now the sergeant is gonna jump the lieutenant. I'm gonna give you a hypothetical, let's say a patrolman decides he's interested now to take the lieutenant's test. Would he be eligible?
No.
No.
No. Since, uh, like you said, since December, since what we've done in the police department. Is that we've restructured the police department, so now I have three lieutenants. One lieutenant's in charge of administration, another lieutenant is in charge of support services, which includes the detective bureau and special operations. And the third lieutenant is in charge of the uh, patrol division. So we're, I'm restructuring the police department. Sorry? So I am restructuring the police department and the first thing I am gonna do is try to bring back this position as deputy chief.
Okay, yes, that's it for now.
I have another question, chief. I don't recall you ever voicing your concern to not get rid of the deputy chief position. When we discussed this at four other meetings.
I did discuss this with you.
Okay, I don't have any recognition of ever you discussing that you weren't, or voiced it publicly when, when this came out. Um, has it always been when you interview for a position like that, that the business administrator and the. Uh, public safety chair are involved in the interview process?
No, the old process was like just.
How do you?
The whole process for the deputy chief's position was, where was interested would have to submit their money. And then detailing their history with the police department. That they were involved in, the position, help, uh, what awards they would see. Uh, and at that point in time, looking at the three positions, the three, uh, eligible candidates. The chief would pick this deputy.
How do you do it for like lieutenant or sergeant positions? A test with an interview process?
Interview process with State Chiefs Association. That test is based on, uh, you know, title, title, uh, thirty-nine. I think at the point in time when you get to sergeant, if you don't know that by then, you don't need to be burgeoning. Those kinds of questions. That's why I'm looking to change that as well in the process.
Okay. I just, sure.
Chief, I fully support your decision to do this, but I would like for you to consider, you know, you mentioned that the morale is low, right? How do we explain to the officers in the town, a sergeant bypassing a lieutenant to be the deputy chief? Seems like that's gonna cause an even bigger morale issue within the borough.
Well, it opens up the promotional process to a lot more bigger pool of officers. Um, I've seen over the last several years, you know, people being, you know, getting to a point where they become complacent. In a position, uh, sour, I guess if you wanna say in a position. This allows, uh, the mayor and council and myself, the ability to possibly pick the next person who would be running the police. So I believe that, you know, with that pool, picking all of those officers. You know, the four officers that are eligible, they might not want, they might not be interested in it. They might not be big. Might just be the three, three lieutenants. So I believe that it's, it, it opens it up, opens a door, uh, keeps officers focused. On all, on all of the ranks, and what the main goal is, unless to the death and serve the people of this town. I, I, I'm a big believer as you move up the ranks, you do more work, not rank as a. Anything else for the chief?
I have one more question. In the ordinance, stop me if I'm wrong on this. One part of it actually shows that if for any reason you're. Not able to become or not able to fulfill the chief's position, you're sick, you're out of this country, whatever may be. You have the ability to actually pick from the sergeants to be the acting chief. Is that correct? I'm sorry.
Deputy chief.
Deputy chief.
Deputy chief.
Oh, that the deputy chief is not this one, right?
Yeah. So is that correct that you could, you could pretty much pick the deputy chief from the sergeants?
I'm just, so if I, if we have a deputy chief and I become sick and I'm out of time, deputy chief.
No, it says in the event that the deputy chief of police is unable to perform his or her duties due to vacation, ill health, leave of absence.
Right.
Suspension or any other reason, the chief of police may designate a lieutenant or sergeant. Who shall assume the duties and responsibilities of the deputy chief in his or her absence. As long as they have met the requirements listed.
Correct. Now it's just being an acting position. Okay, anything else for the chief?
Um, I have a question, one more question, sorry. Um, what made you pick the business administrator and public safety chair? Why not the mayor in interview process? Ultimately, council votes on it anyway, correct?
Correct.
Why not the mayor?
I looked at some of the ordinances and the majority of them was the business administrator who runs the town. The public safety chair is pretty much the appropriate authority.
Okay. That's all I have for you.
Anything else for the chief? Moving along, can you say anybody? Oh, clerk, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just have something really quick. A reminder that primary election day is June seventh. Polls are open six AM to eight PM. There's three ways to vote. You can do early in-person voting from June third to June fifth. There's several locations throughout the county. I believe the closest one to us. Is the East Bronza Cultural Arts Center on Cranberry Road. Um, you can also do um, an application for mail-in ballot. You have to do that by May thirty-first and then your traditional way of going to the polls.
Okay, any questions for the clerk? Here are none, we'll move along. Uh, next is public comment. Uh, you have anybody who can come up for a public comment?
It's actually governing body.
Body, I'm sorry, I'm skipping down. Governing body. Let's start, Julie?
Thank you. Uh, I would just like to say, um, the environmental shade tree commission had its meeting. We've been revising some of our um, applications for tree removal. People should be getting their responses soon. They're almost done with all the applications. I'd like to apologize for the nixle on the Eco Fest, the Earth Fest that we were supposed to have, I'm sorry. Uh, we had an emergency with the location and had to cancel. And hope that sometime this year we'll still be able to do something with the environmental commission. Regarding art and the earth and make a festival out of it. Um, other than that, my library board meeting is only tomorrow. But um, I have been told that summer programming is in way and. They will have a program for somebody to do from the end of June all the way till the end of August, so if you guys have kids at home and. Um, need something to do, there's always programs or crafts or take-home projects. Uh, children's yoga, a lot of fun things, so uh, look out for the summer program from the library. They will be telling us their theme, their summer theme soon. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Kaczynski?
Thank you, Councilor Zid. Um, I, we had the Office on Aging, our meeting this today. And unfortunately I had to miss it for other reasons. Um, but uh. Please check your webpage and everything like that too. There's quite a bit to offer from the senior center. Uh, as far as uh, household repair and the flea market that's coming to raise funds and everything for the animal shelter. Um. Craft club, the Armchair Travel Club, and the monthly mingle is still going on, so. Um, please go to the website if not, and if uh, you don't have the opportunity for a friend or something like that too, advise them of some of the situations that are going on. And uh, that's pretty much it. That's all I have to comment on right now.
Hey, Stoller there?
Uh, Parks and Rec Fishing Derby is coming up on June fifth at three PM, and it is at Professor Park. Uh, Summer Rec is back in full swing, running from July eleventh through August twelfth. Nine AM to twelve PM, and it looks like it's gonna be at the Southern Middle School. There is an option for early drop-off for a fee, so please visit the website and everything is on there or you. There is an option for early drop-off for a fee, so please visit the website and everything is on there, or you could visit the South River Parks and Rec Facebook page. Uh from Board of Education, um there's a meeting on Thursday, May twenty-sixth at seven PM. But if you have the opportunity, they have the curriculum fair from five to seven, where students will have their artwork on display. There also, uh the board event is gonna be uh displaying some renovations, some renderings. Of some of the things that will be happening, so if you have the opportunity, please make sure you come out, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, the last planning board which was held uh last week on the seventeenth. Uh we spoke about the master plan, we were introducing it to the town. Um please feel free to come to the next planning board which is gonna be on June twenty-first, uh voice your opinion. Uh we are in the preliminary stages of uh changing it, so uh we really like your opinion to be uh voiced. Uh next zoning board meeting is tomorrow, uh right here at the courtroom, and uh that's all I got.
Zoom meeting, they have no real agenda.
Alright, there you go.
Yes.
No, actually I'm not allowed to.
Um, the last water health meeting uh did not occur because we had a lack of form, so I'll have more information on that next month. The South River Memorial Parade Day Parade will be held this Monday, may, a week from today, May thirtieth at one PM. South River will honor all those who gave the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our country. The parade route will begin at Main Street and Hillside Avenue, turn on to Jackson Street. Then turn on to Ferry, I know, um well, they usually have a ceremony in front of St. Mary's Church first before they head on to Ferry Street. And then turn up Main and end the parade at the Moore Memorial Building. If any of the um. People in town that got asked to uh participate still have not, it's still not too late, including any marching bands. We have a few, but they can always use some more, they can get in touch with uh the chair. Teresa Hutchison at HutchisonTeresa@MSN.com. The annual Portugal flag raising will be on Saturday, June eleventh at Daley's Pond at eleven AM. And South River Day is being held on Saturday, June eighteenth on Montgomery Street. I know the website has to be upgraded to show the uh the change of the the site of the event. And that's not till the eighteenth of, you know, June, we have a meeting before then, so I'll update everybody on that then. And that's it.
Thank you, you got a major mistake, I forgot the fire chief. Chief, you have anything? Okay, sounds good. Um and our, let's see, the EDC meeting that was scheduled for this month is also canceled due to. Uh attendance, it's rescheduled for June the twenty-second at seven PM at Riemar. And um I had a letter that I received in my mailbox down at forty-eight Washington. From a concerned resident about the commercial parking on Cam Avenue. If they're listening or watching, if they could please reach out to me and give me more specifics. So I can relay that over to the police department or see what's going on down there, so please get ahold of me and let me know. That I have, that's it for me. Moving on. Uh mayoral appointments? Public comment, I'm skipping over it again, public comment, anyone here from the public, make a comment on first call? Do you have your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mr. Seola, Mike Akarski, twenty-five Avenue K in Monroe, I am the SOA president for PBA Local sixty-two. Uh good evening to the members of the council, uh Mr. Seola, I am here for the reason to express my concern. And the majority of the SOA's concern about the current ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty for the position of deputy chief. Back in November of twenty-one, all members or majority of the members of the SOA and PBA stood here. And expressed their concern and their desire to keep that deputy chief's position. And we all are on the same page, we want that position. All the members on a council, on a council, for various reasons decided to eliminate that position. PBA and SOA were given numerous reasons, we were told it was dormant, we were told there was no money. We were told that there's no reason for the position, cause it hasn't been filled in so long. Every member on that council that voted to eliminate it, there was a yes or no vote for you. Every member that striving for that position or had a hopes of that position, it was a shot in the gut for us. Wasn't just a yes or no vote. So I just wanted to rehash for everybody that may be listening and uh. Little confused about the current ordinance or the deputy chief's ordinance as it existed prior. It allowed the chief to select from. One of the lieutenants. For every time there's three lieutenants, he had the option to choose from two and then go to a sergeant, wasn't mandatory. In the reincarnated version. Highly, very different than that. Tony, members of the council, the pathway to promotion within this agency should be clear, concise, and objective. Everything that the current ordinance as you're reading is not. And I say it because of this, to be hired as a police officer, you go through a written test. You go through a s- oral exam, you go through psychological exam. As you work your way through the ranks, you go through the sergeant's test, same thing. Know what uh is expected of you. Tenants, same thing. I got promoted to lieutenant, I had to take a written exam and a oral exam, as did every other lieutenant. This is no way is disparaging to any sergeant that is here, none whatsoever. But the current ordinance as it reads is that, it doesn't matter no more. You don't gotta take no test. I have to sit in front of Mr. Jim Gertchinsky who I've known many years, Mr. Art Lundensky who I've known many years, and the chief who I've known over twenty-five years. And it's no disrespect to Jim or Art, but I'm I'm sorry, you you're not gonna tell me or another lieutenant. That we're not deserving of that position? I don't, I don't tell you about your job? And I expect the members of this community would want. Their next deputy chief to be free from political interference, which, again, no offense to Jim. Or Art. They're all political uh positions. Do the members of this community want their next deputy chief to have Jim's reelection sign in front of their house? Maybe some members do, but I'll speak for the majority of the SOA, we do not support this ordinance as it is written. We support the deputy chief's position, and I'm thanking the mayor and council to even reconsider bringing that back. And the chief as well. But not in this form. This current form undermines the rank structure. The police department, for those of you that may not be aware, there is a rank structure, it's an organizational chart. I'm sure some of you have been in the military, it's an organizational chart. Starts from patrolman, sergeant, to lieutenant. Deputy chief, if the position's there, the chief. When you bypass or degrade that organizational chart and that rank structure. You're opening up this organization for some members, and I'm not even sure it's gonna happen, but you're opening that door. For political interference, and I don't think any of you would want that. I know that you, none of you are gonna say that, but I don't think you would want that, and I know the members of the commu- uh community would not want that. So I am asking you to please. Eliminate this ordinance as it is written. On behalf of the SOA, thank you for your consideration, but once again, I appreciate everybody to reconsider the position of deputy chief. Because we all want it, and that I can say with confidence, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? On first call, second call, third call?
Good evening, Richard Byrne, eleven to set place, um as your environmental commission chair. Uh and shade tree commission and green team. We did uh get to um several of the uh tree applications last week, and. Um there were six uh applications that had to do with the Portuguese club area where. The property owners had gotten uh citations for code enforcement because of the uneven sidewalks. Um that, those trees were all planted by the builder thirty, forty years ago. And they're uh, and thanks to the newly available uh shade tree inventory that was done in twenty eighteen. And now I have it in usable form, um those are sawtooth zelkova. Which is an ornamental tree that was imported from Japan like a hundred years ago. But it has a very aggressive surface root pattern. And that tree has no business being anywhere near curb or sidewalk, so we did approve the removal of all those trees so that. You know, the the residents can then take care of the sidewalks um under the um violation notices. Um including the, three of the trees belong to the. Front of the Portuguese Club property, so they they put in applications as well. And uh we hope to get the rest of the backlog uh completed by uh our next meeting, which is the first week of June. With regard, so there there was, you know, just Facebook lit up with the 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 power failure Sunday, I thankfully was not affected. Um we went and checked in on uh councilwoman Ballis, um um but. One of the complaints was, there's nothing on the homepage of the website, because some people don't wanna sign up for nixle. And it actually is on the homepage, but there's, it's it's under one of these menus where you have to push to expand it. And just being imminent notification, I I think maybe we should look at taking it off the menu where you have to push it. To open it up and like put it right there so that, you know, it's it's on the top and you can see. The the nixle orders directly without having to find the button to 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 push it, so, I I'm just my suggestion. That's it, that's it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, anyone else from the public, first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
A motion by Mr. Gindy, second by Mrs. Ballis, all in favor? Uh mayoral appointments, there is none, and we wanted consent resolutions.
Whereas Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one authorizes the borough council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine. And non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the borough council in whole. As if the same were individually acted upon. Number one forty-eight, authorize the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of school monies. One forty-nine, approve electric demand charge relief for not-for-profit organizations and public schools. One fifty, confirm promotion of Mario Pinto to sergeant in the police department. One fifty-one, confirm appointment of Diane Nail. As coordinator for the municipal alliance committee for the prevention of alcoholism and drug abuse. One fifty-two, declaring emergency repair for water treatment plant. And authorizing a word of contract to Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company Incorporated. One fifty-three, authorize purchase of tasers from Axon Enterprises Inc. to the estate contract for the police department. One fifty-four, authorize twenty twenty-two salaries of certain officials and employees. One fifty-five, appoint Nicholas Summer as a lineman apprentice to the electric utility department. One fifty-six, appoint Jonathan Harris as summer help to Department of Public Works. One fifty-seven, authorize collector of utility revenue to make certain refunds. One fifty-eight, authorize homestead credit refund for totally disabled veteran, lock two seventy-four, lot eight. One fifty-nine, authorize submission for NJDOT twenty twenty-three trust fund application for various roads by CME associates. One sixty, appoint Sylvia Garcia to the position of part-time administrative assistant. One sixty-one, accept May second twenty twenty-two regular session minutes. One sixty-two, authorize the bills and claims list. One sixty-three, confirming appointment of Richie Montabano as a volunteer firefighter to Reliable Fire Company. One sixty-four, authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement with L. Thomas.
Motion to accept the consent resolutions.
Motion by Councilman Gindy, second by Councilwoman Ballis, all in favor? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Ballis?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gertchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
I just have one quick question before I give my vote. Uh Mr. Lundensky, one fifty-two, declaring the emergency repair of water treatment plant, that's I guess what I was asking. We're we're awarding that contract for the backwashing pump?
Yes.
I thought that was something that we just said that the D E P was requiring but might not require. Completely different?
Yep, completely different.
Okay, but wasn't that what CME had sent us over the weekend? It's not the same thing.
No.
Okay, yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes, and I will be abstaining from Resolution one sixty-four.
Council President Seola?
Yes, the extension of one sixty-two, twenty-two dash zero zero three seven five and one sixty-three. Okay, council comments. Start over, Mr. Gindy.
Happy Memorial Day, just remember your uh phone. Um yeah, just quickly thank the DPW workers for handling the uh the power outage as well as the police department and fire department. Who might have had to uh, you know, handle some safety issues for for the people who were affected. I was one of them, and you know, I felt, you know, I bear with it and. I'm just thanking them that um they they got everything fixed. I hope to see you all Monday on the parade ro- route, and lastly, I'm gonna wish my mother. Janice Foyle a happy birthday, and then she'll be happy when she watches the meeting. When it comes out, we had a great day celebrating it with her today, so happy birthday again to her, that's it.
Councilwoman Mira?
Uh thank you, I was not able to attend the um. Planning board meeting regarding the master plan, but I did watch it as it was recorded. Um I just wanna say, uh Todd Bledcher did a good job uh giving us an idea of what the master plan was. Where is or what we need to fix it, he spoke a lot about the MSR zone and the tools that we have. As a council up here to be able to give the authority. To help some of these zones with redevelopment. Uh one of the biggest tools he spoke about was financing, and I think as a council up here. Having that authority, it should be something we look into doing. Um he also spoke about contribution to the Parking Capital Fund and how part of the goal is to provide coordinating. Parking for uh zones like this, much like the PEP program that we did have in place that we rescinded. And yet have anything to replace it with, so. Um just putting it out there, since we are redoing the master plan, maybe we get some ideas of. How to incorporate our parking and. Be more proactive in assisting with our parking utility and not so much reactive and not allowing. A certain development to happen and um watch our town grow in different ways. Um he did suggest policy recommendations regarding um. Parking, and I hope that as the master plan comes out and there's more ideas. The council will look more into changing policies like that. A few months ago, when we started doing these meetings. The mayor started putting what he had on first reading in our agenda session. And I remember a few months ago when he did do that, I I said to the mayor, thank you for at least having a discussion before we start our first readings. Uh since that meeting, I don't think we've put any of our first reading ordinances into the agenda session anymore, so. Speaking up for me personally, I get to these meetings on meeting day. Speaking up for me personally, I get to these meetings on meeting day. And I have no idea, you know, why each first reading is up here, because we don't discuss it before. It goes up. I think we spend a lot of our. Taxpayer money trying to fix the mistakes that we make. Uh, and that's because we don't discuss it before spending the money. On trying to change these things, so. Um. Yeah, I'm just as confused as everybody else on why we would. Remove a position and then put it back on. Uh, I remember back in November when Mr. Gindy decided. That he was cleaning up the ordinances and you were doing it on your own. Uh, today, the chief says that he told you that he didn't want you to remove it, so I'm a bit confused on. How the communication is happening. Public safety has never brought up that. Uh, we were going to discuss bringing this deputy uh, position, so. All I'm asking is, I think we need to clarify the things we say. Uh, I think the agenda session is for that, so that we don't waste money. And I think we all need to look at. You know, like today, we had something for second reading and we amended it again, so we're gonna have to go for. First reading again and second reading when we didn't revise things before we got here, so that's. All I'm trying to see if we can have a little better communication uh, with everyone. Um. And hopefully next meeting will be a little more clear as to. Why things, why these ordinances are coming before us. That's all I have.
Mr. Gertchinsky?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank the Fire Department and Robert Wood Johnson, and especially our police and D P W. With the job that they did throughout this weekend with the police with directing traffic. D P W down at the uh, power station and everything, doing what they possibly could to restore to our uh, residents. Um, and as Councilwoman Ballis had mentioned, Memorial Day is upon us, and uh, March is the beginning of summer. There's gonna be graduations, a lot of yard parties. Uh, please, folks, respect your neighbors with the music and everything else. Um, there's gonna be children out playing. That's the reason why we put out additional stop signs as far as a traffic study to slow people down. Twenty-five miles an hour is pretty fast when you see somebody dart out from behind a car. You don't have much of a time to react. Um. With that, uh, that's pretty much all I have to say. In the meantime, with uh, just respect the men and women who have passed. To preserve the great nation that we have. With that, I thank.
Thank you. Stoll there?
As Councilwoman Ballis and Councilman Gertchinsky mentioned, Happy Memorial Day to everyone. I wanna uh, thank everyone that has served in this room, Mr. Gertchinsky, uh, to you as well. Um, as it was mentioned, D P W, uh, the Electric Utility. Uh, our police, our fire did an excellent job this weekend. I wanna thank you guys. I know it's an ungrateful job that uh. Sometimes we get the brunt of everything, but you guys. Did an awesome job and, and thank you again for your service. Today, um, you know. I, I'm gonna agree with, with Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Mira. I, I think we have to really just communicate better a- as a group, and I look forward to trying to create solutions and not issues. Um. But we have to do a better job. You know, November, this was brought up. Um, with this ordinance, it's now six months later, and we're back to square one. There has to be more input. Um, I look forward to working with the Public Safety uh, Chair and the Committee to try to come up with a solution to this. Um, but overall, you know, there is light at the end of the tunnel, and I do think we just have to synergize and work together more. Um, and I look forward to trying to accomplish that. So I wanna thank everyone. Happy Memorial Day, and uh, God bless everyone.
Thank you. Um. No brief, just wanna uh, add to Mr. Sores' report about the weekend. Um. Once the circuit was overloaded and the system dropped out, it definitely did what it was designed to do. Uh, once our lineman. Found out the root cause of the problem, they began working to correct the problem and restore the power. Um, I'd like to thank the residents that were affected with this issue for their patience. Updates were being sent out via Nixle. As information was received. Um, I was letting the mayor know all our updates, being he was out of state. Uh, was receiving some phone calls from residents asking about the updates. And, you know, we understand everyone's frustration, and hopefully the solution. That our electric guys did uh, will prevent this from happening again in the future. I'd like to thank our police and fire departments for being out there in this heat wave. Our electric department for all their efforts to restore the power quickly and safely as possible. Um, again, they were out in this heat all weekend. So again, thank you to all. Um, Memorial Day is upon us. I wanna thank all who served. And who is serving in the different branches of our military. And come out and honor them at the Memorial Day Parade, and I look forward to seeing everybody there, and. That I believe is all I have too. Okay, so. Madam Clerk? Resolution one sixty-five?
Whereas Section eight of Chapter two thirty-one Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the general public. From a needing of the governing body under certain circumstances. And whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of South River. In the County of Middlesex of the State of New Jersey. That the public be excluded upon the hearing after a specific subject matter. And that such subject matter to be so discussed is as follows. Litigation. Be it further resolved that such record of the above discussion will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gindy, second by Mrs. Ballis. All in favor? Do we need a roll call on that? No? Okay, and this, for everybody knows in the audience, this, once we go in, there'll be no further business. Done. After we come back out, it'll just be adjourned. So.
Motions are open.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gindy, second by Mrs. Ballis. Open. All in favor? So carry. Do we have a motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gindy, second by Mrs. Ballis to adjourn. All in favor? So carry.